Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
First item is welcoming any public comments. For anybody on the line that can speak. Seeing none? The next item will be the consent agenda. First item on the minutes of the RGP move board meeting Monday, December 12th. I'm moving.
Second.
Second. Okay. We suspension on the minutes, corrections, additions to the December 12th minutes. Seeing none? All in favor? Raise your hand please.
Hi.
Second minutes from the finance committee on Monday, December 12th, 2020. Double second. The additions, additions, corrections. Seeing none? All in favor?
Hi.
The payroll marks number 1021, 1022, and 1025. I'm moving. Second. Second. Any additions? Any questions? Any questions though? Seeing none? All in favor?
Hi.
Billy Bender marks 1023 to 1024. I'm moving. Second. Okay, done. Up here. Any questions on the Bender marks? Seeing none? All in favor? Raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Cash flow revenue and expenses accounted for by our treasury. Any questions? Wire office. Meeting reports. Finance. Financial public. Back to mine. No idea? No? Okay. Nothing for the finance. Action items. First item, warning for the ballot.
Okay, so that's me. Mike, I don't know. Are you able to share that on the screen? Okay. So this is our warning for the official warning for the town meeting on March 6th and the election for March 7th. And this looks just like what we've seen in the past. On this warning, it basically is, you know, letting individuals know at this point that the town meeting is going to be in person and it'll be back at the fire department as we've done in the past pre-COVID. Last year was still in Zoom, was still via Zoom. I talked with the, I talked with the people of Bennington to verify at this point. Everybody that I communicated with has said that their plan right now is to be in person for this year, back in person. So this warning is indicating in person. I'm going to ask for two motions, if possible, after we discuss this further. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve it as is. And I'm going to also ask for permission, so a motion that if the meeting in the next week or two before I have to turn this in, that if they make a decision in the next week or two to change it from in person to Zoom, I'm going to ask for a motion to give me permission to just change that line in the warning so I don't have to call an emergency meeting to just change the one line at the top. And up at the top, the one line is where it says, in the very first paragraph way up at the top, where it says, "Are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Firehouse, 130 River Street, Bennington, Vermont at 6:00 in the evening." Now, I do not know, because they don't determine the school order, 6 o'clock is when it starts. Last year was the first year we went first, so we went right at 6:00. Previous years, we went after MAU but before Bennington Elementary, so we went around 6:30. So because they didn't decide an order yet, I put the start time of 6:00 because I have to turn this into the town clerk by, in about a week, I have, I have to turn this into the town clerk. So I put the start time for the meeting at 6:00. We can notify you when our board is actually going to be there, but a number of you also serve on the other board, so chances are you need to be there for 6:00 anyway. But I will notify you exactly what time our board would go up to the front during the town meeting if that changes. So I will let you know. What I'm asking is, we'll go over the warning, but I'm asking for you to vote on it as is and approve it and then sign it. And I'm going to ask that I get permission if I find out in the next week, if nobody thinks it's going to go to Zoom, but if it does, permission to change that line about meet at Bennington Firehouse and just change it meet via Zoom. And what would happen is I'd have to send this document back to you through DocuSign to get you to sign the new warning with the new way we're meeting, but that would eliminate having to have a special meeting just to approve it. Does that make sense?
Definitely.
Okay. You know, we just, we never know these days, but right now it's in person. To go over the articles, the salary for the board. At the last town meeting, we raised the salaries to 1,500. It was a discussion at the town meeting and was voted on. So all board members right now would receive 1,500 each. So this article is again to establish it at that new rate that we voted on last year. The district treasurer at the rate we've been paying the district treasurer, 14-2. The district clerk at 1,200. The assistant district clerk at 600. The moderator, because it is a different moderator now. In the past, the person who had done it accepted $10 and really he never even took back. So the district moderator at 100. We voted at the last town meeting last year to raise it to $100, so keeping it at 100 for the district moderator. Basically to give us permission if we needed to, to borrow money. We have not, and I've gotten word we needed to use that particular article, but it's there in case we need to borrow. If we run short before the next state payment, so to speak, there may be times where we may need to borrow, but can prove that we would get the revenues before the end of the close of the fiscal year. Article 7, an informational meeting on the articles to be voted on, and that's going to be that town meeting and to transact any other business found proper when met. And then on the actual ballot on Tuesday would be the election. We have three openings for board members. So basically to say that we are going to have on the ballot three particular candidates that we're looking for for the board meeting. And those of you who are up for reelection, again, hopefully you've turned documents in or paperwork and signatures in to the town clerk. Article B, again, to approve the school board to spend the budget that we voted on, which is 4.3, you can see the full number there, $4,383,830, which is what we voted on in December's meeting. And Article C, so once again, to put in $60,000 and $20,000 to our reserve funds, 60 for capital improvements and $20,000 for equipment. And I just noticed. All right. I'm having a. Don't look up there. How do you spell equipment? There's no T, right? All right. All of a sudden I panicked on it, thought I spelled equipment wrong. I'm sorry. Article C, E Q U I P. All of a sudden I wanted to put a T in there. I apologize. To put the money in, as we've done on the past task, the voters to approve the 60 and 20,000. And then the rest of it is saying that on March 7th is by Australian ballot. And it lists all the sending, all the towns or communities that could potentially send students to our school that vote on our ballot as to their voting location and times that the polls would be open. And then again, if they want to register to vote, how they could sign up to register to vote is for the end of that on the second page. And also if they need any interpreting services for both the ballot, the town meeting, that they can notify us and we would help provide those interpreting services to them to help them with any information regarding our, what's on the agenda for the annual meeting and also what's on the ballot and any information we provide regarding like our annual report that we provide those services. And then I would need each person's signature. So after the warning is approved, I will be passing this around to ask you to sign this. This is what I turn into the town clerk. For those people not present at today's meeting, I will be sending it via DocuSign to ask you to also sign via DocuSign. And I need everyone's signature before I can turn it in to the town clerk. So I ask that you watch for this if you are online and please try to do the signature so that I can get this turned into the town clerk. Are there any questions about the ballot, the warning for the town meeting ballot? Yes.
I have a question.
Asher has one as well. So Asher.
Maybe it's, maybe it's the same question. So I noticed that there were like three board members on ballot.
Yes.
If I recall correctly, there are only two seats that are up for election in 2023. Has something changed or?
No, there's always been three seats. It's a rotation. I need to go online. I need to open up.
The fires in 23 is John McDonald, Todd Sclary, Dane Whitman.
And Todd also resigned, so it's one in the same. We have decided to wait until the election to fill his post, but he was due to expire in 2023 as well.
I understand.
So it's those three positions or those three seats.
Yeah, yeah. You mentioned it was March 7th. March 7th is a Tuesday and I thought the town meetings were on the Monday.
Yep. March 6th and March 7th. March 6th is the town meeting and March 7th is the ballot or the election. So.
Thank you.
Bottom part of this warning talks about the date of the actual election. The top part mentions the date, March 6th. And the very top paragraph, it says on Monday, March 6th. And then on page one toward the bottom, when it says voting, it'll say March 7th for the actual ballot part.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions?
Well, I think motion to approve the ballot. That's one. This is the one that we, yes. And if we need to be, is it Rebecca, put that motion as the.
That's a question. Can we put it all in one or do we need it to separate? We can put it all in one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will make a motion to warn the ballot as written. Rebecca also has the authority to change it if they change it. Put on my. Yeah. Second. Any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Raise your hand. Hi.
Hi.
A resignation.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen here for a second and. I know you can't see that. I'm going to zoom in. So the, the first, or second action item actually is a resignation letter and I will read it like I always do for retirements and resignations. Please consider this my resignation letter from the Southwest Vermont Regional Technical Technical School District effective Friday, January 27th, 2023. I've enjoyed my work here at Southwest Tech and will do what I can to ensure a successful transition. I look forward to working collaboratively with Southwest Tech when sworn in after January, excuse me, after Wednesday, February 1st, 2023. Respectfully submitted, James Gully. For those that may not know, James Gully has elected the new sheriff of Bennington County and will take his post on February 1st. And so he had to resign his position here at school. We have advertised for the position and have already received some applicants, so we're in the process of getting that position filled. I want to congratulate James on his win as sheriff. I know it's something he's wanted to do for a long time. And I also want to say thank you for all of his hard work here at the center. He's really brought the law enforcement program a long way in his tenure here, including National Wins and Skills USA, which is no small feat. So thank you, James. And I'll take a vote from the board.
I appreciate you both to accept the ready. Thanks for the feedback. Okay. Second.
I would just like to thank James Gully for his time and service and I wish him well in future endeavors of Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
All in favor? Raise your hand. Hi.
Hi.
Retirement.
Okay, retirement. Let's get this up here. Dear Mike, please accept this letter as my formal notice of retirement, not resignation, from the position of special needs coordinator at Southwest Tech. As per my contract, our resignation day will be effective on June 30th, 2023. This was a very difficult decision to make during my 35 years of teaching. Southwest Tech is the best school system I've worked in. However, considering my current circumstances, it's important to me to focus my attention on pressing family issues, which require my full attention. Thank you for your support and kindness provided to me these past few years. It's been a privilege to work with you and I have no doubt the school will continue to do the great, to be great in the future. Warm regards, Robbie Murat. Robbie obviously was our special needs coordinator and she is retiring for several years with us and over 35 years in education. I also like to say thank you to her for her services and work here at Southwest Tech.
You would regret, so I'll make that motion to.
Some words. When I said about Mr. Gully, I appreciate Robbie for her years of service. I wish her well with family issues. Here's hoping that things will go well on that front and it's one thing from the bottom of my heart for being a very decent and considerate person towards it.
Thank you, Asher.
Hold the favor.
Hi.
Nomination.
We will also, on this note, we will be advertising for this position probably starting in the next couple of weeks. These positions are hard to fill. It's a very specialized position and so we are hoping to get a head start on the advertising and hopefully get some candidates in. So we have someone to start for the beginning of the school year. The next one is sort of a resignation. There was two resignations and I missed that. So before we go to the nomination, I need to do another resignation if that's okay, Ken? I'm assuming that's yes. There is another resignation in the, that is not in your Dropbox. Becky does have it to hand out if you, if you want to copy, but it is here on the screen. And to whom it may concern, as of today, Friday, January 6th, 2023, I'm giving notice of my intent to resign my position as a paraprofessional at Southwest Tech. And on January 18th, 2023, to assume the new position of student resource and campus safety liaison, providing the approval of my nomination by the regional board today. As expected, my new position will begin on January 19th. I appreciate this opportunity. Respectfully, Paul Redding.
Motion to approve? Second. Question? If you're in all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. With this position, with this resignation, we will be advertising for also a replacement paraprofessional. Paul currently serves in the role as paraprofessional and driver for us here at Southwest Tech and we will be advertising that this week as well. Next on the action items are.
Second motion on the nomination of Paul.
Yes. Yes, I'm going to go to the, I have a nomination form here next for, for you. And there should be, there should be a copy available there for you as well. So the next action item is a nomination. This is for the new position, which was approved by the board back in October. We, this is for the student resource and campus safety liaison position. And so we did interviews three weeks ago and we had a few applications and they were all very good candidates and we had a good committee put together, but the committee has chosen Paul Redding for his experience both in the SVSU as well as as intensive needs specialists and also his involvement with youth in the community. There were four applicants received. All four were interviewed. You can see the interview team there was made up of myself, Meg, Rebecca, and Nicole, our outreach coordinator. They were actually really good interviews. And this will be a five hours a day as you approved, so approximately 25 hours per week. The salary is listed there and all of the background checks and everything are already on file for Paul. So he will start this position on January 19th, which coincides with the start of our new semester.
I have a question.
Sure, Ken.
I have, I was looking, I was looking at that document and I'm wondering, does he also receive benefits since he's part-time?
Yes.
Well, good. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So looking, looking for a motion if there's no more questions on that.
I'll move.
Seeing none? All in favor? Raise your hand. Hi.
Thank you very much. My turn already again. Okay. It's all right. So a couple of things for you. We have a lot going on at school. This is our major recruiting and admissions and enrollment season for us. It's a year-round event, but this is the year we, the time of year we really start ramping up to get an enrollment squared away for next year. So with that, I'd like to start. So this Wednesday, January 11th, we have our first Southwest Tech sophomore exploration day. We've invited over 460 sophomores from BBA, Arlington and MAU, as well as our families to spend the afternoon with us and get a feeling of what it's like to be on campus in our highly specialized classrooms. Arlington Memorial and Burn Burton Academy have also scheduled field trips for students to come down for the event as well. We're excited to be able to offer the opportunity for our programs to be able to spend time with this key demographic of students as we enter the 2023 and '4 admission season. Each instructor has prepared a 30-minute interactive workshop slash class for students and their parents. Students will be able to experience four different programs during their time here on Wednesday. The event will run from 11:00 to 2:00 and conclude with a meet and greet mixer in the atrium. I'd like to thank those who have been involved in the conception and planning of this event, especially Lisa Harrington-Redding and Nicole Sauer, who represent our guidance and outreach offices. I also want to take a moment to personally thank our faculty and staff. As we have stepped up our year-round recruiting, a great deal of effort and additional planning has been necessary to make these things happen. And while our speed dating type rotations can seem monotonous and repetitive for those who are presenting, meaning our teachers, it's important to remember that students and families are likely hearing the information and seeing our school for the very first time. These types of events help to continue strengthening enrollment and also giving students a head start in their careers and their post-secondary goals, something that we can all get behind and believe is, believe in as educators. As I said, this is the first event of this magnitude. Many of you have attended our open houses before and they're usually very lightly attended for, for various reasons. And we've been doing that for many years. As you know, we do sophomore, excuse me, freshman tours from our sending schools as well as individualized and customized tours. But this is the first sophomore summit that we're doing here at school. And so we're really looking forward to it. I know it's a lot of extra work for the staff, but I know that it's going to pay dividends for enrollment and also for our students. You know, having 460 extra students on campus that may have never been here before is pretty impressive. And so it's been a major feat. Again, I want to thank those who've been involved in making this happen and I'm looking forward to it. And so students will be given information at the end as well as applications and for enrollment. Obviously, we can't take 460 sophomores. We don't have that many seats in the, in the center. But we're hoping that to get students exposed to this. And also we really hope a lot of parents come. And you know, as board members, you of course are welcome to come as well to the, to the event. It will be very busy with 450 or so plus students roaming around. So just be aware of that. The second thing I'd like to talk about with you is that, want to let you know both the board and the community that Southwest Tech is altering its daily schedule next year to be more consistent with a two-hour time block for our programs and a 60-minute time block for our pre-tech foundation intro classes. This change will bring the center into alignment with current state board rules, get better access to all sending schools, stabilize student schedules, excuse me, and balance out the large fluctuations we see in the fall and spring FTEs. And this is being driven largely by a change that Mount Anthony High School is making, which is quite frankly, very beneficial, I think, both for the high school and the tech center. For those who may not know, Southwest Tech has been operating on a waiver for many, many years. State board rules say that our programs must run two hours per day all year and our current setup is not that. We run an hour and a half one semester and two and a half the other semester. And so it averages two hours a day as, as the math does. However, it really is disruptive to student schedules and sending schools because their, their schedules don't change that much second semester at their school and all of a sudden they have to fit our class in either an hour earlier, an hour later. So it's very, it can be disruptive to them and also inhibiting enrollment. So we're looking forward to that. It will alter some of our programs a bit. Some programs that, that meet a little bit more time now will meet a little bit less and those who meet a little bit less will meet a little bit more. So if we're going to kind of just come right, right to the middle where we should be. I'm excited about the change. Change, of course, is anxiety producing for folks. I know that. But this has been, this is going to be good for the center long-term to be able to have a, a really concrete schedule that is easy to explain and benefits our students immensely. So I'm really happy about that. Lisa Harrington-Redding, our guidance coordinator, has worked very closely and Meg as well with the high school, with Mount Anthony High School on this to, to ensure that it aligns well, both for their needs and for our needs. And it's just going to be very for everybody. So I happen to answer questions on that, but it's a good move for the center. We're looking forward to it. The next thing I'd like to talk about, and Rebecca has a copy of this that she could pass out to you, is, it is also in the Dropbox, but I know it did not get sent out in the packet because I didn't have the document until like Friday afternoon. So the agency of education has commissioned a study on the overall governance and funding structures of CTE in Vermont. Has nothing to do with Southwest Tech. It has to do with the overall career and tech education delivery model in the state. And this, this has been sort of coming for a long time. As you, as you know, I think you know, Southwest Tech, River Valley Tech Center in Springfield and Hanaford Tech Center in Middlebury. We, the three of us were in a pilot program called Act 189 and did a lot of work modeling new funding mechanisms for CTE. It is, it was our belief that governance is not, is not necessarily the issue. It is about finance and the funding system, which has not been changed probably in 50 years. And as we know, is pretty inequitable and it needs to be changed. And I think everyone can acknowledge that. The answer of. The answer of what it's changed to, that's that's what they're trying to figure out. We know it's broken, but what the fix is, they're trying to determine that. So there are gonna be a series of listenings, they're calling them listening sessions around the state over the next few weeks. There are none in Bennington. I will, I will tell you where they are. They are at the, the closest to us would be the Springfield Tech Center, River Valley, which is January tenth from four to five-thirty. There's also one on Wednesday, January eleventh, at Stafford Technical Center, and that's in Rutland from four to five-thirty. And the next closest one will be Thursday, January twelfth. And that is at the Wyndham Regional Career Center in Brattleboro, Vermont, and that is from five-thirty to seven. I did inquire with the Agency of Education and the the firm who who is running the the sessions, and I apologize, I cannot pronounce their name, so I do not want to butcher it on TV. If there was going to be a virtual option for folks who wished to attend, whether that was board members, community members, et cetera, and I'm told that the answer is no. There are, there is no virtual option for folks to attend, that they don't have the capacity to do that, which I'm disappointed in, quite frankly, not just for myself, but for other folks who wish to attend and can't necessarily travel to, you know, Springfield, Rutland or or Brattleboro. They're all each at least an hour or more away, so. So what are these listening sessions hoping to to accomplish? The AOE would like to find out how well does the system meet the needs of our current students? To what acts, to what extent are students able to access our programs? What barriers exist? How well does the system meet the needs of our businesses and industry? Do stakeholders have appropriate opportunities to have input on our system? Are the barriers to enrollment in CTE or dual enrollment? Is the CT system sufficiently funded? And how could the CT system be improved to better serve students in the workforce? That's sort of what the report's looking to 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 outline. I don't want to put Dane on the spot, but him and I have spoken about this, and I don't know if Dane, you could maybe give a little bit of information more about it as a as a member of the legislature.
Yeah, sure thing, Mike. Thank you for covering it. I think you covered it well. I would agree that, you know, it's been on everybody's mind that the funding structure for CTEs, you know, could have a good look at it, you know what I mean, to bring forward some of the issues of equity that you discussed. And I think I'm in agreement that some of the government's questions that have been brought forward are sort of important to parse out as we go. And yeah, I just would say that I'm looking forward to the study, but it is disappointing off the start to hear that there's somewhat limited access to some of these, you know, I guess, focus groups, you could say, as far as receiving input from the from the public. So I would just hope to hear from, you know, further opportunities to, you know, basically give input and feedback to contribute to this study, especially in corners of the state that might not be able to make these in-person meetings.
Yeah, thank you, Dane. You know, I I know they're trying to to be representative of the of this, of the whole state and it's it's impossible to probably get to every center with a timeframe that they have, and I understand that. I do just wish they had another option, you know, a virtual option for folks, at least to be able to put their input. I do think there'll be an opportunity probably for, I I know there will be for the Directors Association to have input. We already have had a little bit into this. And we're all, we're all a little anxious, quite honestly, to find out what, you know, what direction does the Agency of Education want to go with CTE? I'm not gonna get into it today, you know, on on live TV with the board, but there are, I know there are a lot of options that the state is state is exploring. And it's my continued soapbox that governance is not the issue. I know that governance is, has been an issue in the past, but what we've determined from our directors group, and I'm not speaking on behalf of them, I'm speaking for myself, is that for the most part, centers' governance works well for them in the region in which they're in. You know, some schools run a regional independent center like we do, some some are run by their high schools, some are run as private schools. And there's like four different models and they all, the common theme among all of them from the directors and the superintendents is that their system works, you know, for the most part, please leave it alone, that it's the funding that's broke. And so I'm hoping that 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 comes through in this, in the, in these hearings, if you will. And there are certainly barriers and things that could, that we've talked about before, whether scheduling, transportation, et cetera, that just do have impacts on us on every center. So I do hope that they come up with a, we can come up with an equitable funding structure for for the communities and the schools because the current one really is is tough, as you know, running through the budget, having to balance FTEs, explaining what those are, rolling on a six semester average, like it's just, it's hard to explain to anybody. And we talk the language every day, and Rebecca and I and Meg and folks in the school, we catch ourselves all the time adding up numbers and wondering what's what by two hundred and forty minutes divided by this and that and everything else. So I'm looking forward to the change. I just, I I I hope that it's positive for everybody. So the last thing I have on my my report is I'd like to let the board know that our Perkins application has finally been fully approved after multiple rounds of of returns and edits and and whatnot. And I would like to thank Meg Honsinger for the work on that. There were some other folks that helped as well, but Meg had a lion's share of work to get that approved. And it is several hundred pages long, as I've said in the past. And I know we're very happy to see it approved. I know Meg had to step out for a for a meeting, so she's not there. But if you see her, please thank her for her hard work on that. Again, many folks worked on it, but she was the primary drafter of that document. And that that Perkins plan is now good for two years, the way the state has has modified things in the federal government. So our application this year and our our goals and our budget and everything is set now for this school year and next school year, which is kind of nice. We don't have to do a new comprehensive needs assessment or anything else for next year. It's sort of a rollover year, which will give us some breathing room, which we're all looking forward to, quite frankly. Perkins has become very onerous for the tech centers and the directors and administration. It is money that we're guaranteed by the federal government, but it is quite a process for us to apply. It used to be quite simple and it certainly isn't simple anymore. And, you know, the money, as Rebecca can attest to, often is difficult to spend. It has to be spent within the categories in which you've identified. And there's not a lot of wiggle room in that. And so we're very cautious in spending our our Perkins money. But in that Perkins plan, which I will now, I will share with you next month that we now have it approved. You've already looked at it back in the fall or in the spring. But there are some positions in there for additional teachers based on, based on need to expand some programs. There's also money in there for advanced industry credentials for our students. There's money for professional development for our staff. And there's money for our CTSOs, our career organizations, mostly for advisor travel and a few things that we can pay for out of that. So it does represent a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's not a small amount of money, but it is a lot of work to get this money. So we're happy that we finally have it approved. And that's what I have for the for the board and the community, and I'm happy to to take questions if you have any.
Mike?
Yes, Leon.
Are you going to be present at this listening session or somebody else?
Leon, I heard, I broke up a little bit. I heard I'll be present, and I wasn't sure for what what you were asking for, for the listening sessions or the sophomore day.
Listening sessions as to whether who's gonna be present from this 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 center at any one of those sessions.
I am not gonna be able to be present in person at those sessions, Leon. We are determining if someone can be from the center. And and but we will go from there. We just got this list again at the end of last week of when these listening sessions were. So it's pretty late news, but the school will be represented somehow. I assure you of that. Any other questions I could answer for for anybody? Okay, Ken, that's the end of my report, Ken.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.